Are we ready? Yes.
I'll do it again.
Yeah, it'll be fine. All right, good evening, everybody. I apologize for the late start. Welcome to the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:12 PM. Lauren, may I have a roll call, please?
And here, Carrie Steinbach. Here, Lauren Hirsch. Here, Laura Breakstone. Here, Tom Donhill. Here, Richard Driver.
Here.
Tim Pench.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nature, on God, in the physical, in the digital, for all.
Thank you. Mission. Wonderful. Go ahead.
All right. Mission, vision, motto. Mission: Ensure academic achievement and personal growth for all students through innovative and engaging educational opportunities. Vision: An inclusive community of motivated learners who are inspired to change the world through exploration and collaboration. Motto: Excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this point in the meeting, we do welcome public comment. We also have a chance at the end of the meeting for more public comment. You can speak at both or just one. I will say that the way public comment goes at an official school board meeting is a little bit different than the conversation, right? So this is not an interactive meeting. We are governed by policies and rules of how the meeting runs. So if you come up to say a public comment, we'll ask you to state your name and then say your public comment. You have three minutes to speak and we will not interact. At the end, we will just say, okay, thank you. I only explain that because it's a little bit awkward, right? But that is just the policy and the rules by which these meetings run. We do have an event on Thursday night, a town hall event, that is an interactive event. So that is 6:30 on the presentation stairs here at LBMS Thursday night as well. If you want to make more comment or have conversation at that point. But please rest assured that we are listening, we are paying attention, and we will respond in time. But it just is not an interactive moment. That being said, is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Feel free to raise your hand. We can go one at a time. Please come on up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Check on him for it. Yep, that'd be great. And just state your name.
Oh, Jenny Graziano.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you. Thanks so much, everyone, for being here tonight and for your service. Good evening, members of the board, administrators, and fellow parents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jenny Graziano, and I'm the parent of three students in the district, a fifth grader, a fourth grader, and a second grader. Tonight, I want to raise concerns about the role of technology in our classrooms, particularly the use of district-issued iPads and Chromebooks. As a community, I would like us to ask, how are these devices being used in the learning process? How much screen time are students getting during the school day? And how are we balancing digital tools with traditional learning materials like textbooks and workbooks? This summer, many parents in our district read The Anxious Generation and reviewed research regarding screen time effects on children's development, mental health, and neurochemistry. Given these concerns, I believe we need a transparent, data-driven discussion about technology's impact in our schools. I urge the board to consider three actions. One, enable screen time tracking. We need data on how much time students spend on devices and which websites they access. This should include usage trends such as peak device use during the day. If the district already has a classroom device management system, this information should be shared with parents to support informed discussions at home. Two, increase investment in high-quality print materials. We must ensure students have access to print resources that support learning, such as textbooks, workbooks, dictionaries, newspapers, and nonfiction books, aligned with curriculum standards. These materials allow students to engage in multi-step reading and writing projects that do not rely on screens. And number three, consider the introduction of a district-wide screen-free week. This initiative would encourage students to engage with their curriculum, peers, teachers, and families in meaningful hands-on ways beyond digital devices. I appreciate the district's commitment to integrating technology into learning, but it is important that we continue to be intentional and transparent about its use. I encourage the board to take a closer look at this issue and ensure we strike the right balance for our students. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak now? Yes, please come on up.
Let's move in.
Yes. Thank you. And then just state your name.
My name is Christine Schweet, and my son is a fourth grader at LBEES. And I just want to echo the sentiments that Jenny Graziano just shared with you and that I have some concerns about how technology is being used in the classroom. I participated in the readings last summer, the book club on visual use with children. And I've just seen some increasingly concerning behaviors with my son at school. And I just wanted to share some of those with you. I'm not able to attend the roundtable on Thursday, so I thought I'd come here tonight. So he comes home every day, and he generally shares with me what they were watching on YouTube and not necessarily something that they were learning in the classroom. He's not allowed to access social media at home. And I have a lot of, I work in technology in a career, and I have a lot of tech concerns about technology use in children, just in general, with that background. And I always ask him, when does he have time to watch YouTube? Because I would think that they would be busy doing something else in the classroom. And so he always says that they have free time or they do it when they're done with an assignment. And so I love my son, but I know what that means, that means that he half-assed, sorry, he half-assed something, he didn't do a great job, and then do his best quality work, writing down whatever their assignment was, and they rushed in through something. And instead of focusing on what they're supposed to be learning, they were just trying to get back to the computer screen, which is concerning. I also had an opportunity, while I had some quiet time at work for a couple of weeks, to go in and volunteer in my son's classroom. And I just had, I watched the class focus a lot on what snacks they were eating, getting drinks. And instead of writing their assignment on their computer, focusing on what else was on the computer. And so I just think, I would like you to consider focusing on trying to use what's in their brain and working with their hands and writing out their homework on paper instead of technology. Because that skill to write what's in on their mind can come later in typing. But there isn't anything that can replace kind of that brain-hand connection that's important to learn. So just wanted to share some observations and hope that you'll consider further, I know you're eliminating YouTube, so that's great, but maybe further, consider further other ways that children can learn instead of using their computer.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak at this time? Okay, there will be another time for public comment. Oh, we have comments. Amy, go right ahead.
I have several comments that were emailed, and I will be reading those off. I'll start with this one from David Baldwin. Good evening, school board. I apologize for not being here in person, but I want to express my concerns about the use of Chromebooks in elementary schools, particularly at Lake Bluff Elementary. While I speak as a parent of an eight-year-old, this is a broader issue affecting all young students at a critical stage of their development. At no point in history have young children had such widespread access to screens, digital stimulation, and online content. The introduction of Chromebooks in elementary schools is a major shift with long-term consequences we do not fully understand. What we do know is that children at this age do not require an internet-connected device to learn effectively. Education has always been carefully curated with schools selecting books, materials, and teaching methods to support structured learning. Yet Chromebooks provide unrestricted access to the internet, bypassing the same level of oversight. Even the strongest filters cannot fully prevent access to inappropriate content. I tested this myself and was able to find personal financial information, explicit images, and other unsuitable material within minutes of my son's school-issued device. Another major concern is YouTube, a platform designed for engagement and addiction. Even with controls in place, its algorithm exposes children to distracting, inappropriate, and emotionally manipulative content that contains a labyrinth of hidden messages, suggestive content, and media designed to exploit human psychology. Beyond content risks, the developmental impact of screens on young children is significant. At elementary school ages and for my son, eight years old, kids are still refining attention spans, emotional regulation, and social skills. Eight years is biologically young, so incredibly young. An eight-year-old is still losing baby teeth. Their brains are still forming the neural pathways that will shape how they process emotions, build relationships, and develop critical thinking skills for the rest of their lives. At this stage, children are supposed to be moving their bodies, playing outside, using their hands to build things, making eye contact in conversations, and learning through direct human interaction. They should be reading physical books, writing with pencils, solving math problems on paper, and engaging in activities that strengthen their attention spans, not passively staring at a screen, clicking, and navigating a digital world they are not prepared for. Warm regards, David. And then I have another one I'm going to read, and I'm going to read off. There were several people with the same public comments. So this is from Stephanie Denninger.
Amy, do you mean that the email was?
The email was word-for-word the same. So I'm going to read, I'll read the names and read the email, and then we do have some more as well. This same one is Stephanie Denninger, Heidi Schoen, Jessica Zar, Tori Muffet, Anu Mishra, Virginia Olenek. And that's all for this one. So I oppose the proposed plan for four third-grade sections with 24 to 25 students per class for the 2025-26 school year. Research best practices and common sense support the benefits of smaller class sizes, particularly in the formative elementary years. I urge the board to add a fifth section to reduce class sizes, providing significant academic and social emotional benefits to LBS third-grade students. And Kim Frano said the same thing, but also added, she opposes the proposed plan for four kindergarten, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade sections. And then the same with Kelly Hart, added the kindergarten, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. And Shazza Hussein added, thank you for your time. I know you will make the best decisions for the children in our community. And Michelle DuPaul, also the same, but added, this would be a significant increase in the number of students per class for this grade and would be the largest number of students per class compared to all other grades. Kayla Lethrop also added, I am especially concerned as there is a current third-grade teacher whose tenure is under review due to multiple complaints against her for public board meeting minutes. She has been deemed unprofessional and disruptive to the education of students as well as violating the code of ethics for Illinois educators. Increasing the class size as well as having an ineffective teacher is putting multiple students at risk for a lost year of education. And then I have another public comment from Katie James. I oppose the proposed plan for four third-grade sections with 24 to 25 students per class for the 2025-26 school year. My opinion is informed by direct experience. I have another child who was an LBEES second grader in 2022-23 when classes were that large and there were significant issues. As a result, another section was added to reduce class sizes for that grade, and we have all seen the benefit. I urge the board to maintain a fifth section next year for third grade to reduce class sizes. We have already learned that classes this large do not serve our kids well. Let's not repeat the mistakes of the past. Thank you for your time. And this is from Greer Thurston. I strongly oppose the proposed plan for four third-grade sections with 24 to 25 students per class for the 2025-26 school year. As a special education teacher, teachers will be unable to support classes of this size. They will not be able to differentiate the curriculum appropriately among the class to meet academic as well as social needs for every student. With smaller classes, research has proven teachers are able to differentiate appropriately while meeting students' needs, whether they be academic or social. I'm extremely worried that my student who will be entering into third grade will get lost in the shuffle. He's a great kid, but requires support with such a large class size, his teacher would be unable to effectively spend one-on-one time with them that will be required for him to continue to succeed academically and socially that is required by the state standards. I urge the board to add a fifth section to reduce class sizes, providing significant academic and social emotional benefits to LBS third-grade students. Thank you. And we have one more. Catherine Marsuvian. Hello, Lake Bluff School Board. Would like to voice my concern for the proposal to bring the number of classrooms for the current second graders from five classrooms to four next year. There are currently 97 students in the grade, which would make the class sizes larger than any other grade at the school with 24 to 25 students per class. This is unreasonable for third grade. 18 to 19 students per class is already a lot to manage and provides a large workload for teachers. Increasing this is problematic. With larger class sizes, we can expect more behavioral problems, more focus on classroom management, and less focus on reading and writing. Next year's fourth and fifth grades will have 100 and 102 students, only three to five more than next year's third graders, and yet the plan is to have five sections per classroom for those grades. I'm sure there's a lot that goes into the proposal and planning, but there has to be a better way. There are four teachers on the new enrichment team and numerous specialists at the school. I'm not sure why so many teachers are leaving the classroom, but I'm certain there's a better solution that would allow for my son's grade to maintain five sections slash classrooms next year. Please reject this part of the proposal. Let's work together, get creative, and keep our kids' learning, keep our kids' learning experience at the forefront to set them up for success. I will close by mentioning that a number of parents I've spoken with have said, you can say something, but it won't matter, they will do what they want. It's disheartening to hear this, but it's worth trying. I truly hope you are open to hearing what our community is saying and willing to make a change. And that's all for public comment.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes.
Okay, then for now, we will move on to addition of discussion items. So are there any board members that have a topic that they would like to bring forward to be added to a future meeting? Oh. Not hearing any.
I mean.
What?
I would like to discuss addition to disciplinary policies. I think what you're missing, I think our policy has a gap. Should be addressed.
So review of our current policy on discipline.
Yes, yeah. Well, I'll have a specific proposal. But it's not to change anything that we've got, it's to try to add something to it.
Do you want to bring that to the policy committee?
Yeah, it's looking at, I mean, as I read the policy, it's kind of focused on specific events and, you know, appropriate reactions to those and different things you can do. But it doesn't really address repetitive kind of events. There's, and I would like to see if we could, if there's consensus to give some kind of a message to the staff as to what should be considered for somebody who's doing the same thing over and over and over again.
Okay. Can I suggest that we add that to the agenda at our next policy committee meeting, of which is an open meeting, and all of you are welcome.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine. I mean, this is not something that I would expect, that if we approved it, would be effective like next year. So I just see this as an ongoing kind of discussion, see if we can reach consensus or not, I don't know.
Thanks, Dick. We add that to policy. Okay. Yep. And then 10.
A few meetings ago, we talked about the vision 2030 that was presented at the IASB. I didn't know if we were going to revisit that in the future.
Good question.
So I was just bringing that back.
Yeah. We can do that, put it on for discussion and revisit. Anybody have anything else? Okay. LBEES student update video.
All right, so we recently had our incoming kindergarten parent night. And that is an evening where we bring in families that are preparing to enroll for the next school year and allows them to get an overview of kindergarten, kindergarten teachers present. So one of the things that we added this year was a video that sort of features our kindergartners and it's what they love about kindergarten. So I thought we designed it for the purpose of sharing with incoming kindergarten families to hear some kindergarten student voice, and it felt like this was a good audience to share the video as well. I'm hoping that the audio works.
I like when we go outside in quiet time when I can color. And my. Pasta. A pasta. Um, that you learn more stuff.
That we get to learn stuff.
We get to learn stuff.
What kinds of things are you learning?
Hi, Goody. Kindergarten going outside and play. Art class. Art.
I think I'm art.
Because we get to make a lot of stuff. Music.
Music.
Um, because I love to sing. How about kindergarten, play with my friends? Learning music.
When we go outside and play for about five or seven minutes.
When we go outside and play for about five or seven minutes, I have a little. I have choice.
Because we can go down fast slides.
I love that. Why do you love going to recess?
Because we can go down fast slides when it's windy.
What's the best thing about kindergarten?
The best thing about kindergarten is recess.
What's the best thing about kindergarten?
My favorite thing about kindergarten is to color.
What is your favorite thing about kindergarten?
Number one, art. Number two, hanging recess. And number three, Eagle Club. My favorite thing about kindergarten.
What is your favorite thing about kindergarten? What is your favorite thing about kindergarten?
Um, when, um, when it's nighttime and when we have recess and when it's choice time and when we go to lunch and during music. And when we leave and I go to art and when I see my mom.
That's awesome. I think it turned out pretty good and captured all the things that they love. I'm working on all my video editing, so this is a good exercise for me. But kindergarten is a really special place, and it's fun to capture those early things that they really appreciate. And, you know, as parents, some of the things that they come talking about. So excited to bring another video, but any questions about what we love about kindergarten?
That was awesome. Have a good day. I love that they sound happy. Yes.
Their sweet little voices, I got to figure out how to make their little voices project, but. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Kelly. We're going to do what we love about you three video too. Okay, so moving on to reports, we do not have a PTO report or an alliance report tonight. President's report, mine is very brief. We are going to, for the board yourselves, start up Super Eval for Dr. Lealley's annual evaluation. You all got a assessment here to take home and take a look at, and just look into your email for details. They'll come from Super Eval. And I already mentioned this, but I will mention it again, we have a roundtable session, a town hall-like discussion on Thursday night at 6:30 here at LBMS, the presentation stairs. Just an invitation to the community to come and tell us what's on your mind and share feedback, and that will be interactive, so we can have more of a discussion, a interaction that night. That's all I have. Okay, for my report, just a reminder for families that we have the HumanX survey. We asked that you fill out the survey. It's a long one, and the state asks that you fill it out on every one of your children, but it does go into our school report card, our state report card. So if you wouldn't mind taking the time, we really appreciate the feedback. It goes into all aspects. Our staff and our students take that survey as well. And also, very exciting news, our first Community Use Summit in some time is coming up this week. We have eighth, ninth, and 10th graders from LBMS, Deer Path, Lake Forest, 15, and what's the other school participating, Williams, oh, St. Mary's? And we have awesome facilitators. The kids will be reviewing data from our social media survey, internal community use survey, and some data from 115, and they're going to be having roundtable discussions and giving some feedback to our community wellness task force on what supports they need and how we can help them through this kind of hard time of life in the transitions from middle school to high school. So that's coming up. And also, Dr. Montgomery and I, at the same time, unfortunately, as the Good Summit, will be speaking with Realtors, not that they're not as fun as kids, but we will be speaking with area Realtors and talking about where, kind of where we are with all three districts in the area and what we're offering to good community members. But we're looking forward to participating in the second part of the Good Summit in April. That's my update for tonight. Great, thank you. All right, so moving on to discussions and presentations, and we will begin with the release time update. Dr. Lealley, Tracy, Jackie. I think this one's going to be primarily Jackie tonight, but just as a reminder for everybody, this was a big investment in professional development for our staff this year. And I just, before we even let Jackie talk, I just want to congratulate her on the rollout of this professional development. I've been doing this for 25 years, and the majority of the time in my administrative career, I've spent in curriculum and professional development, and I have never seen survey results like she's getting from our staff. Almost 100% of our staff, I mean, like 99% of the comments that come back on the surveys she issues every single time that they meet are positive, grateful, and feeling like they're getting smarter about what they're doing with our students and getting benefits from them. So like, I appreciate the investment of the board, the investment in time, and the enrichment teachers to be able to make this happen and make something great happen for kids was a creative solution, and I know we're going to yield great results. So thanks, Jackie.
Thank you. All right, so an update on our release time that's happening at Lake Bluff Elementary School this year. It's a reminder of our mission, vision, and motto and our connection to the strategic plan. So this work directly ties to goal one, and specifically, the strategy was to develop a guaranteed viable and transparent curriculum. So just some reminders about what is a guaranteed viable and transparent curriculum. The guarantees are that the standards and things that all students will receive within a grade level or within a course, the viability is the amount of time that that will take. So making sure that all the things that we want to teach and that we prioritize to teach, that there's actually the time to do it within a school year. And then the transparency piece is not only the internal transparency with each other, but also to the community as well. The reason behind this is because this is a really high, has a really high impact on student achievement when there is this guaranteed and viable curriculum. So this is, and also just a little reminder too, when you look at curricular resources, you converge with the curricular resource, and there's a lot in it. It can be up to two, three years of curriculum that we won't. we won't have a year to cover. So there's a lot of choices that are made every day within classrooms that teachers are making a lot of times independently. So the opportunity for us to collaborate and have these discussions and really prioritize what we want to be focusing on is extremely valuable. And again, provides opportunities for our students that are consistent. So that as they continue to matriculate up through the grade levels, they're have kind of knowledge that we can consider foundational and continue to build upon. So this is a little bit of an overview of what the meeting schedule looks like. The relief time started back in September this year, just so we can kind of get our feed order up. In the future, we hope to start earlier with this. The structure for the teachers is that the teams meet kindergarten through fifth grade. I have the full team's attention for 60 to 90 minutes weekly. So 90 minute, 90 minute meetings every week. By the end of the year, I'll have met with most teams 25 times. Kindergarten has a slightly shorter period of time just because of what's developmentally appropriate, we felt for the relief time that this, for the science and social studies instruction that they're receiving. We have made up for that teacher collaboration time by providing those kindergarten team with some half-day professional development opportunity throughout the year as well. So while the teachers are working with me on curriculum, the students are receiving 90 minutes of science and social studies instruction, which is equivalent to what they've received in the past, but in this 90 minutes, it's much more targeted. It ties into our guaranteed viable curriculum because it's guaranteed that all students are going to get it. In the past, just being open, science and social studies is frequently one of the first things to fall off the plate when you've had a reading lessons makeup or math workplace or a math assessment that you were trying to complete. So this is a way for us to guarantee that all students are receiving that science and social studies curriculum while simultaneously providing some professional development and collaboration time for our staff. So this is the process that we're going through with our teachers as we're talking about what the guaranteed viable transparent curriculum will look like. The first question we ask ourselves is what do we want our students to know and be able to do? So similarly, I'm going to walk you through that process of how we're thinking about what we want our teachers to go and be able to do. Coming out of this time, we want our teachers to have some knowledge and skills. So those knowledge and skills you can see here, we want solid knowledge of grade level standards, challenging expectations, what does mastery look like, designing effective assessments. And we have a lot of conversations about what's within our control. There are things that are outside of our control and we really try to focus on what can we do when our students are here with us every day. Then we have a lot of skills that align with a lot of these knowledge components that we're building with our staff. And then we want to know how will we know when we've gotten there? Just will say this is a continuous, ongoing process. It's not going to have an end date, but we want all students to be able to grow and achieve. We have standards evident in classroom instruction, differentiated instruction. We're making adjustments to that instruction constantly based on assessment data. So what happens one year might be very different the following year based on the students that we have in front of us. A culture of a high functioning learning community. A lot of this work is grounded in professional learning community structures that exist. And then HUMAX data that reflects this with our staff. We're learning by doing. These are a lot of the components of what some of our agendas will look like. Our big focus this year is really on completing our stage one guaranteed viable transparent curriculum, which is defining what are those goals for instruction? What are those knowledge and skills that we want our students to have by the end of each unit? So we're really digging in and becoming very clear about what those things will be. We're also working on developing and implementing some common assessments. This is kind of the stage two component. It's hard to design assessment when you're not even necessarily on the same page of what are those guarantees across the board. So that's something that we're doing some work on, but we'll really be focusing more on as we move into next year. So we're looking at data. We bring student work. We make instructional decisions based on what we're seeing in classrooms. And then teachers are able to use that information and go back into their classroom and implement those things right away. A lot of problem solving, idea sharing, professional growth and development. And it's very flexible based on individual team needs. First week of agendas looked identical and it's going to choose your own adventure with grade level teams based on what we've identified as areas for growth or what data we're seeing or things that we needed to focus on. Some teams, well, you know, a few weeks ago, we had some conversations about like, you know, this is writing, this is not feeling right to us. Can we make some adjustments before we move into the next one? I've had conversations where we shifted gears and took a pause and had some social emotional learning focuses. So it's really it's very flexible while trying to maintain this goal of having our ELA and Math Guaranteed Viable Transparent Curriculum by the end of the year. So again, our current focus is having a curriculum available by all of this coming school year. Really evaluating everything we're doing embedded, like looking at standards. So we always tie it back to our, does this align with what the standards say? Do we have a common understanding of what the standards are and what that looks like and how students are demonstrating their grasp of those standards? We're looking at the resources that are available to us, evaluating whether or not we need additional resources. When we do need additional resources to support, whether it's additional professional development, additional student resources, we're pulling all of those things in. Ongoing data collection to help us evaluate those things. So when questions do come up of like, oh, we would like a little bit more information than that, teachers are going back and getting more information from their students and bringing it back to our meetings. And then another added layer to this is that there's also inclusive schools professional development. That's a partnership that we have with True North and they come in once a month. So they're actually here this week supporting during the release time. So it provides not only the time for students or for teachers to be collaborating, talking about curriculum, but then also we're embedding in some of that professional development about inclusive schools so that they can apply that to the curriculum we're doing so that it's happening kind of simultaneously and not as. Some of the intended outcomes that we're already seeing are high level of learning and growth for all students. 85% of students in our district are meeting or seating or showing growth on our MAP or IAR assessments. But we want to continue to boost that up. Grade level alignment, really clarifying those teacher and student expectations across the grade level. We are seeing a big increase in understanding of the importance of systemic and systematic and explicit instruction. A lot of vertical alignment. It happens very casually, but you know, the fourth grade team will mention that they really need the, their grade team to focus more on math facts and the third grade team jumps right in and is looking for all the ways that they can do that. So there's a lot of vertical alignment that just happens kind of naturally in the conversations that we have from week to week. And then really empowering our staff to make the instructional decisions and to feel like they really understand what it is that they're doing and to really be able to look at information and data and the students in front of them and make good decisions about what they're doing every day. So some of the feedback, as Lisa mentioned, I, at the end of every meeting, so for about, I think, meeting 15 for most teams at this point, I asked the staff to fill out the same survey that I'm sure they're really sick of. But it's just helpful for me. I ask them to be really honest on it because sometimes they, I ask them even like, if there's something that we haven't talked about or something that you'd like to address with me, just please be honest. I think that I'm getting pretty honest information from them. I try to dig in and see is there anything that we should be working on more, but these are some of the, the areas that staff feel I always ask, what portrait of an adult attribute do you feel like deception align to? In all the meetings we've had, only one person ever said none of the above, which I find a success because there's been some conversations that have had during these meetings. They're not always rosy, but I think people usually feel, be feeling supported. And then again, we see people feeling that it's training that they need, it's spending valuable time with colleagues that they're receiving, it's coaching, that they're feeling inspired to grow. A lot of teachers walk into these sessions saying it's their favorite part of the week. So here are some comments that I've received on our surveys that we have every week. Read them to you, but a lot of appreciation and you know, acknowledgement of the investment that this is and just again, empowering them to be professionals and more collaboratively. It's been, I think, really appreciated for our staff and we're seeing results right away. And I think over time we'll just continue to see an impact. So some of our next steps are to continue to develop our guaranteed viable transparent curriculum. As I mentioned, it'll be available to the community in the fall. This is a little preview of the format that it will, that will be available on our district website. It will be something that we continue to grow and add to as we go along because we want to always make sure that we're looking at the most current data on the students in front of us and best practice. But it has some of the more technical education terms of the standard on the left-hand side, but then it does dive into what are those key understandings we want students to have? I really love the, the conversations that we have along around long-term transfer goals. For example, this is the fifth grade team and we talked about how we want this common thread to be for them in math, for students to understand the reasonableness of their answer. So that's something that the fifth grade team has really just embedded into their instruction throughout the years. Is your answer reasonable? And it is just makes a really cohesive way for students to be thinking about their. And then next year, as we've got our stage one, it's considered the stage one and the learning goal and target. And as we have that litified, we'll be able to vote a little bit more on some more common assessments that we'll throw in the classroom. So those are the more day-to-day assessments that we're doing rather than the big buckets of MAP or IAR.
That's a lot. That was really, really great. I will admit that last year when we were first, you guys were first bringing this idea and had this vision of how this was going to work. I was like, sounds great. Yeah. Like, okay, cool. But to now actually see how it has been implemented and the benefits of it, I feel like it was, it was a great movement. Really happy, happy to hear the update on it. Thank you.
I agree. It was hard to visualize exactly how it would look.
For me too. We made it happen. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Jackie?
You mentioned the vertical alignment. Is there ever opportunities for for different grade levels to meet with each other? I know probably it'd be hard with the stuff that is.
We haven't come up with a good plan for that yet, but there's a really, really strong desire for it. One of the things that I, activities I have planned for the spring is like, what are like the five things that you would like to see coming from the grade level above you, from the world you, or from the grade level before you? Of, in a more general way that are kind of the outside of the standards thing. So I think there's more conversations, but having them actually get to meet and articulate, we haven't found a a good way for that to happen yet. There might be some times during our institute days, which are sometimes inside agendas that we're running, but definitely we look for more opportunities to have them talk directly because there's definitely a desire for that.
So right now are you the relayer of that information? Cause you're the consistent person meeting with each grade level.
I myself say, I don't remember if I told you guys this, but a lot.
Sorry. It's great that there's a consistent person though, right? So that if fifth grade means seventh grade to work more on math facts or whatever, it's exact that they're getting that information in real time.
Even in common language, it's helpful with identifying some places that were, you know, another example I use is like using the word adjectives instead of describing words. And are we consistent about when we're teaching that and when we can expect that kids have that understanding and just little nuances that I think are hard when you're kind of in your own grade level bubble that we're able to kind of start them vertically and.
The other thing we didn't talk about was magnifying outside professional development opportunities too. So we are able to not send a large group of teachers to an outside professional development session. We can send a few less and then they can come back and they have the dedicated time to share it as opposed to spending the money on everyone there at the same time and lose out time with the classroom. So there's so many benefits to being able to do that. It's not just Jackie. We're able to maximize outside professional development as well as we're trying to continue to stay current. So it's just really worked out very. And you talked about with phase two, coming up with common assessments and not the MAP, not the IAR, but does that mean like, for lack of a better term, I don't know, chapter tests or like daily little assessments on whether a lesson hit?
All of those things.
And would that mean that, let's just say, fourth grade, they would all give the same assessment then? Like they'd all be assessing the kids in the same way?
Yes. And there is a lot of that to some degree with the curricula. It's like some of the curricular resources we use, like for Jizz has kind of these common end of unit assessments that teachers are using consistently. But I think embedding more common informative assessments and more of those pieces of data that we can be collecting along the way that then we can shift our instruction. So rather than just the end of unit pieces that I think we have a pretty good handle on, what other things can we be embedding throughout a unit to make sure that we're kind of checking in with kids in consistent ways across the grade level and make instructional choices based on that information?
Anything else for Jackie?
This has been great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Enjoy working with.
There's a lot of me. Okay. Next up, we have staffing update with Dr. Lealley. Okay, thank you. It's that time of year. So we are looking to prepare a budget for next school year. As we've talked about many times during our budget presentations, staffing is the majority of our budget. And so we've written a tentative staffing plan with a number of full-time equivalent teaching positions that we asked the boards to approve at this time, based on what we know about enrollment for next year right now. We've had other years where there's been a lot more to talk about as we've added more positions over the last five years. We've added multilingual teachers, social emotional support, math interventionist at the elementary school, positions in curriculum and technology. So really there's not a lot to talk about at this point other than we are adding a full-time technology support at the middle school and reducing by a point five. So we're adding a point five. We're taking that part-time position and adding the full-time positions for tech so that we're even in both buildings with that kind of support. As a reminder, when we look at sections, we are using 25 as the cap. And so when we hit 25 across the board, that's when we add a teacher and reduce those class sizes. We look at that all the way up until August 1st. And then that's sort of our deadline by which we would hire new teachers. And then we're looking if kids were to move in after that to provide more support at that point. So right now this is where we're at based on. What is that all? What does the tech support person? What are their duties? So this person is the one that's housed in the middle school library upstairs and they would work directly with Kevin to support teachers in the classroom with instructional support or just helping with machines, tech tickets. We have projectors. We have Apple TVs. We're trying to make it a seamless experience if we're going to be using tech and a lot of the tech that's being used and here is presentation, connection, you know, having kids present. So we just want to make sure that we have someone available to be able to support with that. We have the same thing at elementary. When I got here, we had that at elementary as well. We're hoping that iPads reduce the need for like break fix support and that we will be able to get more in classrooms and support with whatever teachers need as we work with the new iPads. We want to make good use of those devices, make sure we're doing things that are creative and structurally engaging for kids. Let me use them.
Remind me, the social worker psychologists, they do both buildings, right?
Some are housed in one building and one right now we have splitting.
Yeah. Okay. So one splitting.
We only have one of those positions. Yeah. The social worker.
Lisa, we're gonna talk back to three features for language arts for seventh and eighth grade.
So we are, yes, we are losing through retirement, one English language arts teacher at the middle school. We currently have a, an English language arts teacher who's serving as a halftime reading specialist and halftime English language arts teacher. Since in the last three years, we've added more multilingual support, we've seen that the need for a halftime reading specialist who's really locked into only a couple of periods where she can push in and support is not as effective. Our multilingual teachers are available all throughout the day for any period where kids need to be having support in the classroom. So we're shifting that position to a full-time English language arts position and then monitoring whether or not we need an additional reading specialist next year.
So we'll have like three and a half teachers for seventh and eighth grade?
We'll have three teachers to do six, three. And we're going to be doing the English language arts. We're going to be doing an update on the middle school scheduling as well. So we'll talk about how that's going to look.
And so is that going to end up still with like about 20 in each class or?
It'll be similar numbers. But this discussion is to approve. Just the number of individuals. Yeah.
Right.
It's point five additional.
Yep. And we're not approving anything tonight.
That's just discussing.
Yep.
Yeah.
What our role in this is talking about how many people we employ, not where.
And we definitely have a lot of shifting that takes place over this. Once this is approved, then we look at our retirements, we look at numbers, and then we start to transfer people around that sort of.
So this isn't necessarily approving the, this is just the total number?
Total number of people. This is where they would be at this point.
At this point due to numbers that we project. But as we get actual enrollment numbers in and we keep looking at this all the way up till August 1.
Given a lot of the comments we heard, in elementary school level, are there often paraprofessionals in these class, in each class as well?
We do have paraprofessionals that many times are assigned to a student, but yes, there are many times more than one adult in the classrooms.
Not necessarily they would be assigned to that class. They might be just to.
We have some classroom assistants, those would be based on the student. We have some classroom assistants, those would be based on the students that are in the room. They're not, their position is not to be an assistant for the classroom.
Okay.
If that makes sense. The majority of them are watching.
Is, is that an idea to address some of the concerns that we?
We have done that in the past.
So I agree, we should revisit that. And I know also when we went through this last year, there was a deck that we had sort of broke down. Do you remember this, like the deck that we had? I think it would maybe be a good idea to put that in, you know, the next time we discuss this.
Yep.
Because I know that was helpful for a lot of the parents.
To show what?
It, it sort of broke down sort of what the studies were on sizes and.
Sorry, we're talking about staffing update, not class size.
Yes, but I mean, when we get to that phase, if.
Well, we don't approve that. We are only approving like.
No, I'm saying in the future meeting, when it gets to approving that, we made a deck when we went through this last year that we presented to parents.
I did not present it on class.
Yeah.
So I think it's valuable for presentation.
Yeah.
Purposes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Carrie's clarification here is that we don't ever approve.
Correct.
Where people are placed in the.
Correct.
We just approve.
Right. Exactly.
But yeah, I think that is a, I think that's a great idea. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Then let's talk about policy packet one seventeen, second page.
The second read, again, there's not a whole lot in here that's substantial. The majority are footnotes and legal references. There are some updates to remain compliant with a lot, but overall this pack is fairly straightforward. They're all listed for approval on the bottom. We're not going to discuss all of them. But we want to make sure we're being transparent in the agenda about what policies we are discussing.
You can always go to a policy committee if you need to discuss them all.
Any questions on any of these? Yeah, I, I can't don't be here. Okay, great. So then from there we will move on to our action items for this evening. So the first one, and just as a reference point to everyone in the room, these are all action items, things that were discussed at previous meetings that are being voted on this evening. So the first one is approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six student device repair fees. They have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six student device repair fees as discussed in the February eleventh meeting. Anyone have any further discussion or questions on this?
Yes.
Yes.
So I support this, but it's conditional on flexibility and deciding whether to assess the full charge for lost or damaged.
Sure, if some of yous aren't able to pay it, yes, will there be?
I agree.
And the changes will be clearly.
Outline for parents. In the memo it says it will be. I said in the memo it says that it will decide case by case basis.
Yes, we will make sure. Wonderful. Okay, then may we have a call vote going?
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Penich.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next is approval of the special ed transportation vendors. So may I have a motion to approve the special ed transportation vendors as discussed in the February eleventh meeting?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or questions on this one? Lauren, can we have a roll call?
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes. That motion passes. Next up is the RJV contract approval. This is for the night custodians.
Night custodians from March through the end of this.
Thank you, Janet. We have a motion to approve the RJV contract as previously discussed.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions on this? Lauren, roll call please.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Richard Driver.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes. That motion passes. Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six BOE committee, or not committee, sorry, meeting calendar approval. We have a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education meeting calendar as discussed in the February eleventh meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any thoughts on this?
There are more changes.
That's the list. All right, Lauren, can we have a vote please?
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Amy Cottle Donahue. Richard Driver.
Yes.
That motion passes. That should be. No. The next is. The approval of the press policy packet one seventeen. They have a motion to approve the all of the policies from packet one seventeen. They were listed on the agenda. So moved.
Second.
I can have a roll call please.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch.
Yes. That motion passes. Next up is the personnel report. Hang tight because I do need to read the entire personnel report. So non-licensed new hires. First up is Dave Yamouche as a guest teacher effective January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five at a rave a hundred fifty dollars per day. Gretchen Winkler, paraprofessional at LBMS, affected two nineteen, twenty-five, replacing Gabriela Salvato Mata at twenty dollars per hour. Skylar Cook, paraprofessional at LBES, effective two twenty-four, twenty-five, replacing Stephanie Moy, twenty dollars per hour. Ryan McLaughlin, technology assistant for district office, effective date TBD, replacing Daniel Valente at twenty-five dollars per hour, four hours per day for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So twenty-five dollar power moving forward and then four hours per day currently. One retirement to announce, Janelle Carney, sixth grade math at LBMS, that will be effective the end of the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. We have a motion to approve the personnel report for February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. So. Lauren, may we have a vote?
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Penich.
Yeah.
That motion has passed. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following: open session meeting minutes from January twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, regular Board of Education meeting, February eleven, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole meeting, the treasurer's report, the impress report, the bills report, the P card report, and activity account report. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda for February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, as presented by administration. So moved. Is there any discussion?
I don't have any questions this month.
Well, thank you for letting us know. Would anyone like to pull anything out of the consent agenda for a separate vote?
Just that, was there an activity report? Or I didn't see it. I don't know if it was just.
No, not this one.
Just.
Nothing on the activity of this motion.
Thank you, second.
That's great. Thank you for clarifying. Lauren, could we have a vote?
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes.
That motion passes. Foyer request. We do have two foyer requests this month. They are in the agenda and in your packet. Okay, we are back to public comment. So at this point in the meeting, we again welcome public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment, raise your hand. All right, not seeing any. Then just a reminder that we do have Thursday night town hall as well. May I have a motion to adjourn the February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, regular Board of Education meeting at eight, ten PM?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.